Meeting of the Putnam County School Board for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 is now in session. We will have our Pledge Allegiance to the Flag by Ms. Sandra Gilyard and our Invocation by Mr. Bud McGuinness.
Our Pledge Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and to God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings given. Thank you for this opportunity to meet together. As we begin our school board meeting, please help us to come together to make this school board reflect your kingdom, breathe life into our ideas and decisions, and help us to build a team that has love and respect at its heart. Lord, come give us the inspiration to be the best we can be.
Yes.
May we be a shining example of your goodness and truth within this school district. Now we ask for your continued protection of our students, faculty, staff, and administration. We ask these gifts in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Okay, we've had a change in our, the order of our presentations. We're going to do the Product of Putnam Award Winners first, and Ms. Ashley McCool is going to come and help us give out those awards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Dr. Surrancey, is anyone else presenting with you? Okay, good deal.
Well, when we do pictures later, we can.
Let's have them come up from the chamber.
Chamber? Yeah.
Can you guys come up? Yeah.
Dana and Wayne.
And Wayne, Mr. McLean.
You might have to help Wayne up here.
So, the Product of Putnam is a joint effort between the school district, between the Chamber of Commerce, and the Palatka Daily News, and we are very proud to announce the winners for the 2021 school year. We have seven very amazing honorees, honestly, when you read about what they've done for this community, and so I am going to take a minute and just read a little bit about each one of them, and if, as I read, if you could come up, Dr. Surrancey will present to you a plaque, and if you could stay up here in the front, we'll take a group photo when we finish. In the area of agriculture, we have Scott Brahman, a Palatka High School graduate from 1992.
His mom and dad were both teachers, too.
Yes, and amazing. So, what I have, what some of the folks shared about Scott, and then we also had them answer some questions for us as well. Scott goes above and beyond for not only the agriculture communities with their logging business, cattle farm, and feed store, but also contributes in a variety of ways for the entire Putnam County community. Scott and his family have always been actively involved in the Putnam County Fair as well as the Junior Cattlemen Association. Scott says that graduates should always remember where you came from, work hard, and make your mama proud. I like that. Find your talent, stick with it, and make a difference in the community. Be someone that when others look at you, they say, "He has something special, and I want that, too." Thank you, Scott. We're very proud of you. And proud to, um, this is our agriculture winner for 2021. Thank you. In the education category, we have Ms. Sharice Williams. Sharice is a 1995 graduate from Palatka High School and is now serving as our Assistant Principal at Aquila Elementary School. Where most of her nominations came from, her community members, so I think you need to be very proud of that. She is full of energy and enthusiasm for her work. Sharice can find the positive in almost any situation, especially this year with all its challenges. I have never met anyone more dedicated to giving back to their community. She is a hard worker who cares deeply for her community and wants to make it a better place. She wins the hearts of everyone who has the pleasure of coming in contact with her through her selfless acts of kindness and generosity. I have witnessed her as our Assistant Principal helps set up new classrooms, clean tables in the cafeteria, and deliver food and other materials to class. She is well-loved by all of her students and staff and is the true example of a leader and a role model. For the area of industrial manufacturing, we are proud to announce Wade Dallas Senior. Mr. Dallas is a 1977 graduate from Palatka South High School. He is a former Marine and retired from Georgia Pacific after more than 30 years of service. Wade is always willing to help others and is well-known as a very kind and Christian man. Dallas wanted to tell recent graduates to use their God-given talents and abilities to make an impact in our society. He is a true testament to the success of individuals that choose to graduate from, stay, work, and live right here in Putnam County. Congratulations, Mr. Dallas. In the area of community service, we have Ms. Heather Hoffman. Heather is a 1997 graduate of Interlocken High School, and she was very proud to have been chosen for Product of Putnam. Hoffman said many people invested in her future. There were several teachers who stood out and were amazing during my school years. Ms. Marcia Carr, who inspired confidence in me and helped me become proficient at public speaking; Ms. Laurie Warren, who encouraged me to reach for the stars and showed us that learning could be fun; and Mr. Neil Stevenson, who always pushed me to try harder and demand greatness of myself. He had a big impact on a lot of people, didn't he? Hoffman hopes graduates will never let anyone tell them that they can't achieve greatness. You have it within yourself to achieve anything you dream of, but above all, you have to believe in yourself. Leave your footprints on the world and show everyone exactly what you can do. Congratulations, Ms. Hoffman. In the business category, we would like to welcome Matt Buckles. Matt is a 1995 graduate from Palatka High School. Matt enjoys his successful career as the General Manager for Beck Chevy GMC Buick with the Beck Automotive Group. He's an active member of the Palatka Rotary Clubs and volunteers to sing the National Anthem at many events across Putnam County. Everybody shows up when Matt sings, I can attest to that. Buckles said his parents have helped him shape his life along with countless teachers and coaches. He said graduates can be successful regardless of who you are or what career path you choose. If you're willing to work hard enough, learn, and be accountable for your outcomes. Be the change you want to see in the world. It starts with you. Congratulations, Matt. Whose very proud daddy might be standing, sitting right behind him.
Brother's back there, too.
And his mama, I knew his mama was here. In the area of healthcare, we would like to recognize Erin Hall. Erin graduated from Palatka High School in 1996 and is now a local pharmacist in Putnam County. Staying in Putnam County was not on my original to-do list, Hall said. However, sometimes life will go a different route than originally planned. I can say it has been fulfilling to serve the citizens of my hometown, knowing that you're providing a level of care to people that love and support you is gratitude in itself. He says to recent graduates, "One may think Putnam doesn't have many opportunities, and in some instances, you may have to leave to pursue your dreams. The factor to remember is that there is always room for growth right here in Putnam. Even if you leave home to further your education or trade, always think about how Putnam may benefit from that which you've learned." And in the public service category, Ms. Trenisha Austin. Trenisha is a graduate from Crescent City Junior/Senior High School in 1996. She is a dedicated public servant who has selflessly served as Deputy Clerk at the Clerk's Office for 22 years. In addition to a career dedicated to public service, she's an active volunteer with Epic Cure Volunteering multiple times a week and is extremely active in the South Putnam community. She is the perfect example of someone who believes in service above self, to ensure this community is one we are proud to call home. Many people resort to other places, but she was born and raised in Putnam and continues to give back to the place she calls home. She wants to encourage graduates to choose a career in public service. You have an opportunity to earn a living wage, serve the residents of this great county, and affect positive change. And education is the key in today's society. Never let anyone tell you that you can't accomplish any goals you set in life. Anything you set out to accomplish can be accomplished. Keep God first in all you do, and He will direct your way." Congratulations, Trenisha.
Thank you, Ashley, and I know in just a minute, we want to show a plaque, and is now a good time?
I had it easel, but I couldn't get it put together.
Right.
Holding the plaque.
Okay, this is a permanent plaque that we actually have on display in our hallway in the district office. This is our third year, I believe, and your names are forever engraved on there for generations to come, but I just want you to understand how important this is. You guys are actually role models for what we're trying to accomplish here in our district, and that is educate kids, have them graduate for whatever path they want to choose, and then come back to Putnam County and give back. And you guys are the role models, and we would ask that at some point in time that you be willing to mentor our kids, because you definitely are the ones we want our kids to follow. So, thank you very much, and I want to call Wayne McLean, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, to come up and just say a few words before we take the pictures. Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, that's actually chairman, Dana didn't get promoted or anything, she's president. Hey, I just wanted to say from time to time, Dana and I, and other members of the chamber are asked, what does the city of Palatka or Putnam County got to offer in incoming business in the Putnam County? I guess standing here today, I look up here, this is what we've got to offer. This is pretty darn great, isn't it? Congratulations, each and every one of you. I will say that Wade Dallas has been honored before when he came back from, I think, Desert Storm, is that correct? We had a thousand young kids at Browning Pear School, that he was their hero, and I appreciate, especially on Memorial Day, all of your service and what you've done.
I think you were the last graduate in the class in South, right?
I was.
So, we need to scrunch in a little?
We're gonna need to scrunch in a little.
You want to cover the quiet stuff.
More members, do you guys want to stand so I can see your faces?
Yeah, and I won't tell any stories on Scott or any of the rest of them.
All right. Ready? One, two, three. You want to pick up your mask? I prefer your pretty face, because I don't want to see all the more. Okay, we'll try, we'll have one, two, three. Thank you all very much.
Can we, can we get the athletes first?
Okay.
Or the next, and then we'll do the, Ashley, if you could do that.
Congratulations to all of those recipients. Our next presentation is going to be the state track and field and weightlifting winners, and Ms. McCool is going to introduce those people also.
All right, so, we're very excited to, honestly, we have so many talented athletes in our district, it would be impossible to recognize all of the students, student athletes and the ones that do amazing things, but these particular students have placed at the state level for spring sports. And they are both from Palatka High School, and their coaches should be here with them. I haven't gone around and spoke to each one, but they should be here with them to come up and share a little bit about the amazing things they did. So, we'll start off first with, from the weightlifting team, Jeremy Passmore. Oh, wait, Jeremy, yeah.
Ismail.
Ismail, that's another thing. Ismail Foster, Jeremy Passmore, and Darryl Polite and Patrick Turner are the weightlifting coaches, and do you want to come on up? Coach Polite, Coach Turner, and Ismail, you can come on up. Okay, okay, thank you. And Ismail, if you want to take your mask off.
It's been a long time since I've paddled there.
All right. If you could just share a few words about Ismail and his success for wrestling this year?
You see this guy right here, he's small, but he's very strong, very strong. So, he come in, he worked real hard, and we made great strides through the season. He started at 1:15, ended up 1:07. And just want to say we appreciate you, man, and he's just a freshman.
Oh, wow.
He plays state, so that means that you'll probably be seeing him a few more years to come.
I hope so. I've been following him all season.
His uncle won it four years in a row.
Gino was his uncle, so he.
There you go. Yeah, we know Gino.
Congratulations, Ismail, for representing us so well at the weightlifting meet. And then we should have Jeremy Passmore, the track and field coach. Was he here today?
We have Coach Lee.
What? Okay, good deal, thank you. Coach Lee? Yeah? If you could please bring up Ms. Torian's pool. Congratulations. You all need to know that Ms. Torian's won first place at state and stood at the top of the podium for her efforts in the shot put, is that correct? At the track and field meet, and that's just been a few weeks ago, because I saw it all over social media. You're quite popular. So, we are very proud of you. If you're coach, could you just share a little bit about that experience and all the amazing things you do?
Hello, Wayne, Coach Lee. Torian's is an amazing talent. She's a hard worker. As a sophomore, she's really made great strides, learning how to appreciate the fine little things that build the greater foundation, how to appreciate every little brick that turns into the greater masterpiece. I'd like to make it clear that Ms. Poole is a sophomore and Ismail is a freshman, so there's, those are, those are things to move off of. Bright futures ahead of both of those athletes. She started off at throwing about 11.28 meters and then progressed all the way up to about 12.84, but she has grown in practice over 13. So, I mean, that's the, that's not the ceiling, that's just where we know she can go, and she's set her goals high, and we're going to work her tails off the reaches.
Congratulations, and Torian's also plays other sports, so.
She's a multi-sport athlete.
She is, so for her to excel in one so greatly is quite, quite an accomplishment. Can you remove your mask for a minute so I can get a photo?
We enjoyed so much following her on social media, too.
Yes, it's been great.
And that, that concludes my two, so thank you guys for the time for this. Thank you.
Congratulations, athletes. That's a tremendous feat, first, second place. Now we will have our last presentation on Putnam Virtual High School graduates by Amanda Burney.
And Ms. Huff, she's the principal.
And Ms. Renee Huff.
So, of course, our enrollment quadrupled this year, and that meant that our graduates also, they didn't quite quadruple, but we did have almost triple what we had before. So, this is our biggest class ever, we have 26 graduates. We also have among them several honor grads, you will see that as we go through, and we have a high school rodeo champion in there. We have a 15-year-old early graduate. We have several students who are early graduates, we have some early admissions kids who did dual enrollment, so we have quite a diverse population. Several of them have full-time jobs because virtual allowed them to have that flexibility. So, we have a nail tech, we have a, we have some construction workers, we have a daycare person, we have several diverse students. So, let me share with you who we have. David Armington. Christina Baze. Natalie Bishop. Savannah Coutreir. Charity Gore. Carson Davis. Jasmine Hopkins. Margaret Legacci. Tyler Lee. Rebecca Lyon. Toby Minor. Vanessa Nguyen. Shane Parrish. Technical difficulties. There he is. Margaret Shepherd. Lane Singleton, he's our farmer.
Easy. That's a great family, too. They do a lot of good.
Alyssa Seiverling. Tanner Smith. I bet you can't guess which one he is. Kendall Sweat. And Isabella Westbury. So, we had a great group of kids this year.
Ms. Huff, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, we're just very proud of them and all the circumstances that we've been through this year, and especially with their families, and being able to be in Putnam Virtual School, and to see them be successful and to graduate. And also, last week, I'll cry, we were able to do our four that were top scholars, and that was quite an honor for us to be able to have four students that were part of our top scholars.
Very good.
Thank you for allowing us to present them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, Tanner Smith, I heard his grandmother talk about him today. He's actually on the national rodeo circuit and has won a number of honors, and she was talking about all the stuff he's won, but, you know, this is very conducive to what he's doing, so. And he walked up on the stage for top scholars and, you know, like he just got off his horse and got there.
He got it honest.
Yeah, he did, he got it honest.
That's awesome. I don't have any public comment. We also have no public hearing, so now we move to the consent agenda. Mrs. Gilyard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Yes, ma'am. G6.
Anything else?
No, ma'am, that's it.
Mr. Buckles?
I've met with the superintendent and our attorney prior to the meeting, and I feel very comfortable. So, I'll pass.
Okay. Mr. McGuinness?
I have nothing to pull.
Nothing? I also was in agreement with Ms. Gilyard that we should hear some more about G6, and I had my other questions answered, so.
Make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the agenda item minus G6.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've had a motion by Mr. Bud McGuinness and a second by Mr. David Buckles. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, none. Motion carries 4-0. Mr. Bowling is ready to talk about G6.
Yes, ma'am. So, the property that's listed that we're calling the Neighborhood Facility was the original name of the gymnasium building, which is Building 5 at Jenkins Middle School. Just a little bit of history on that building, it was a joint venture between the school district, the city of Palatka, and the Housing Authority. I think it was either the Housing Authority or the city at the time that received grant money, but it was a three-way purchase. So, the school district owned the land and the school, but that gymnasium building wasn't yet in existence. That grant made it possible, and it was jointly owned by the three entities that I named. Somewhere along the line, I'm guessing, and Americans speak on this if he'd like to, but I'm guessing the Housing Authority just kind of rolled under the city, because in 1968, the school district signed a 40-year lease to occupy the gym and the locker room so they could use it for PE, obviously, but it was still a three-way venture. 30 years later, even though it was a 40-year lease, the city decided to turn it over to us altogether. The Housing Authority wasn't in on that, but I'm guessing, once again, it's probably because the Housing Authority is kind of a subset of the city. So, that's how we got it. We got it back in '68, '78, '98, 2008. The building was officially signed over to us. We think that it was because the programs that had previously thrived in that building weren't as vibrant at the time as they had previously been, and then there's always maintenance cost and upkeep. So, that's how the district acquired it. So, fast forward to now, we're consolidating, and the school district is not leaving Jenkins operational for next school year, as you're well aware. The mayor approached the administrative team about acquiring that building again, and I think he has ideas to run similar programs to those that were run back when I was a kid. And so, we kind of like that idea. I think in this entire revitalization plan, we've said again and again, we don't like leaving voids in any neighborhood, and I think this would be a great opportunity to give back to that community and say, you know, "We'll make this available so those type programs can happen again." Essentially, there will be places to go during the summer and things to do after school. We think it's a win-win for all involved. So, that is the history of it, and that's why we're looking to recreate the same deal that we got it for, it was a $10 sale, and it was presented to us back in 2008, so we're essentially wanting to do the same thing with the city of Palatka.
Y'all have any other questions that?
Yes, sir. So, ma'am, in the past, Jenkins has been very much in the forefront as to allowing families to have repass there after their loved ones had transitioned. So, this now will come through the mayor, through the city of Palatka and all of us.
Now, I've seen repass services.
I've seen it in both ends, cafeteria and.
Yes, ma'am, I've seen it in the cafeteria.
I've seen it on both ends, so I was just, yes, sir. So, if they're going to do the cafeteria portion, they would still come to the school board to get permission. If they're going to use that portion, that is the gym, then they would go through the mayor's office.
That is correct.
That would not be uncommon in any community.
That's what I mean, yes.
I mean, I've seen other, other schools in Putnam where we've allowed communities to come in and use a cafeteria under proper supervision and circumstances.
Now, the city does have to vote to accept it, and they'll have a special meeting on the 14th, and right now, we tentatively have plans for the superintendent to present the keys to the mayor on the 15th, on our next board meeting. So, I think Lex can kind of talk about the timeline in terms of when execution signature should happen, because we need to make sure that they want it before we give it to them.
And Mayor Hill, so we will go back to calling it the Neighborhood Facility Center, or are you thinking of a name or something?
Come on up, Mayor, yeah.
That would be up to them, I would think.
I know, but I still have that question. I want to know, because there will be people that are going to want to use the facility.
Right. Yes.
Good evening to the board, to the superintendent. It's always good to be here. To answer your question, our hopes are to be able to revive the history of the building as it relates to Northside Neighborhood Facility Center, but also to be able to preserve the names of both Robert H. Jenkins and Central Academy. I think with the, now with the use of Jenkins Middle School as a, as a middle school in its current state, it creates a great opportunity for us to be able to preserve history within the community as a whole. Our ultimate hope is to also be able to use the green space that's adjoining the building, in the back of the building where the track is, as well, because we've seen in the past where that space has been used for, for everything from funeral services to outdoor events, as well as when I was growing up, it was the space that most of the young kids used as kind of the play area. as kind of the play area and after school programming. And so what we're looking at is just an opportunity to create another haven, just like the Northside Neighborhood Facility Center was in its past, in its heyday, so that young folks will be educated there. They will be trained there from a working standpoint. They also will have recreational outlets. Seniors will be able to have their gatherings, and other community organizations will have a place that, in essence, has become the hub of the community as a whole. So that's what we're really looking for. Chief Shaw is here as well, and he's had, we've had significant experience with PAL, with the Weed and Seed Center and some other places, and we also see some additional opportunities. So if the board will let, will indulge, we'll ask Chief Shaw if he would speak just a little bit as to where and what the benefits would be from a crime prevention standpoint.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
In working with Weed and Seed, we quickly learned the impact of crime prevention in our communities and how we can help prevent crime for youth. PAL, if you don't know, is one of the, or is the largest crime prevention program in the nation. And we have embedded it in our community. It has thrived. The community and the youth in our community are using it to the best of its abilities now. And we think that adding this extra piece will only take it that much further, and it would allow for us to continue running the programs we have for the city and providing those programs to the citizens, and then, if not more so, be able to grow as well. So it is our hopes, we're just sitting in the back, just to be able to see that this all goes through. If it does, then our eyes are wide open, and we see with the Summer Core Program quickly approaching, as well as our mentoring program that's year-round, and then our athletic program with our basketballs and things like that, flag football, we see a large opportunity to be able to seize at this moment.
Thank you so much.
We just want to make sure we reiterate the fact that the commission has to approve. Our presentation will actually present a resolution before the commission on the fourteenth so that we can actually have the final pieces together before it comes back to the district. And so those are the last pieces for us as it relates to everything.
Mayor Hill, I know how much you love kids. I have watched you grow up and become a man, and I fondly remember childhood watching you play ball for years, and I know how much it means to you for the kids. And we need somewhere besides Shawburg, and, you know, and you need an indoor facility where you could do some of the athletic things that Chief Shaw is talking about, and I just see unlimited possibility. It sounds like a wonderful situation to me.
And again, to bring it full circle, for those that have been concerned, and rightfully so, about the closing of Jenkins Middle School and the things that you mentioned, your vision, I think this is going to help us to gravitate towards each other and to heal. I like what I've heard, and if I can help you in any way other than financially, let me know. Much prayer, much prayer.
I just think that in the middle of, I think when you look at the closing of Jenkins Middle School, no one wants to ever see a neighborhood school close. But in the, when you look at the closing of Jenkins Middle School, but the history of Central Academy and Palatka Central, the silver lining is to be able to have the Northside Neighborhood Facility Center be open to the community as a whole and to be an opportunity for everyone from age eight to eighty to be able to grow and prosper within that center.
Appreciate you so much.
I just, I have one question or maybe one point of clarification. You mentioned the green space, which I think that's a great idea, but I don't know if that's included in what we're, no, because I talked to Mr. Bowling before. I don't know if we need to.
The green space isn't included in what you have before you today, but I think it's critical to us, and it's something that we had, we didn't really talk about the green space because my understanding is that they were all a part of the parcels that were included. And then we found out later that it wasn't a part of that. But I think the green space is critical, and we would love if the district would vote to give us the adjacent green space that's directly behind the building, which is the track area which goes back to the fence that's existing.
And again, I just duplicated the original deal, the way we got it. And so any conversation towards the green space would, in my opinion, be a separate conversation than, you know, what's currently in front of you.
I know that we've got some wooded land back there, but it's, it's.
I think he's talking about the track.
Yeah, I know what he's talking about, because the railroad track borders that, yeah. That'd be a separate conversation.
I've had to run that track many days for P E.
Thank you.
So Mayor Hill, I have another question. When you present it to the city commission, will it include the green space or not? Your presentation?
Our presentation will include just what's here, which is the four parcels. I think it's four parcels that's before you now. Again, if we had a wish list, that would be one of the perfect pieces. It would add the greatest opportunity for us to be able to do a multitude of things within the area. And so I think maybe for purposes of simplicity, it may be easier for us to come back and make a subsequent request to the board for that.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want any miscommunication.
Madam Chairman, I make a, I make a, any more comments?
A move acceptance.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve number.
G six.
G six that Ms. Gillyard and Ms. Pickens had pulled.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Mrs. Sandra Gillyard to accept item G six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no, we do not have anything in the emergency session. We have no unfinished business, no new business. So we are to reports. I believe I started with Ms. Gillyard last time, so I'll begin with Mr. McGinnis this time.
Let me remember what I did again. I want to congratulate the retirees that we had on our agenda today and the virtual graduates, and that's an outstanding achievement for those young people, the way Ms. Huff, the way you explained what they are doing. And, I mean, at this critical time, they just, they persevered to the ultimate. And congratulate our state champs and also the, our recent product of Putnam winners. I had the opportunity to attend the Palatka High School, well, two FFA banquets, one at Palatka High and one at Interlochen. And one thing that you observe, if you're not familiar with FFA, is just the camaraderie and the involvement and the parent involvement and family involvement with that organization. And it's evident throughout the year, because of what they're doing, they're constantly working on a project or an assignment. And then just the whole novelty of the FFA program, what we have ahead of us now, the whole idea of seven through twelve, it just really, it gives me goosebumps to think about what we're going to be able to do with those students, what they are able to do. And, you know, magically, we have the right instructors where they are in those places, and that's just, that just says so much about our school district right now. I did get a chance to attend the Putnam County Top Scholars. There were one hundred and seventeen, I think. And, you know, great example of what our students have been able to accomplish. And looking forward to the graduations coming up. And I got to sit at the big table today. It reminded me of, of my oldest son, whose birthday is today, and he always would make a joke about when you get to sit at the big table, so. I got to sit at the big table, and today's his birthday, his fortieth birthday.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Buckles?
My, obviously, congratulations to everyone that we've had before us and all of our graduates as we approach graduation. My biggest concern is that we normally never get through a graduation that we don't have some type of auto mishap within the next week or two following graduation. I can't stress, I know we used to bring demolished vehicles on campus to the high schools and let the kids look at them, and I just, I know the superintendent will be working with principals to communicate how important it is that these kids realize that there's going to be a lot of people on the road, and they need to appreciate what they're going to do and keep their mind on what they're doing. It's always a, it's a wonderful time of year, but having been through education as many years that we have, we've seen some really bad things. So I'm, I feel certain that Superintendent's got a handle on trying to communicate the message to the kids through the administration. And with that, I just hope for a pleasant close of school year and that everything goes fine. That's the best I can hope for.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gillyard?
All right, pretty much it's just ditto to what I've already, what has already been said, most definitely to our top seniors that were on it. And then to our speaker, Mrs. McDaniel, an awesome job encouraging our young people. You, you all just know how to do it, and it makes students feel good about themselves after doing all of the hard work, sacrificing, giving up some parties or games to make sure that they took care of everything that needed to be taken care of. Then that leads me, again, to the retirees, to Ms. Wanda Wilkinson, I know, Mr. Anthony Cawthorn, Evelyn Gibson, and Kathy Hoyt. To all of you, thank you for a job well done, and thank you for being a part of such a great district. With the Neighborhood Facility Center presentation, as I stated earlier, has helped me to resolve some of the things that I was feeling as all of this was transpiring, and then to read in our agenda that Miller Middle School is partnering, so to speak, with the Fruitland Peninsula Historic Society. And I read that, and I said, this is what it's about, community, working together, helping each other, doing things, and it's just great. And they open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they're not paying me to put this pitch in for them. But the Neighborhood Facility Center and all of these things will come together to keep our children safe and give them choices. And then to our virtual graduates, the thing that I saw most, yes, I was trying to read all that they had accomplished, but I looked at their originality. Not a one of them looked alike. They were themselves, and that tells me they feel comfortable in the skin they're in. God bless you. I'm done.
Thank you. It's always hard to follow, Ms. Gillyard. I, too, want to congratulate the product of Putnam. I had the privilege of teaching Ms. Austin Trinesha and also her daughter and her son. And if there was a book about how to raise your children, she would be right there. She's just amazing. She's an amazing mom, and she has overcome the odds, and she greatly appreciates education. She's a wonderful representative of Putnam. I went to the Memorial Day Ceremony at the riverfront. Thank you to the Burt Hodge Lodge for putting that on. It was very respectful and a good ceremony. I had the privilege of being a judge at the, I think it's a privilege, of being a judge at the cheerleading tryouts at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School.
Yes.
And it was a lot of fun, and the girls were wonderful. And then they cheered Friday night at the football game, and they did an excellent job. And I would just really like to commend Sean Delaney, Coach Sean Delaney. He had a very important team member that broke the rules. And so he sat out this young man for the first half. And Crescent City was behind thirty to six, and it really did not look good. But he held to his guns, and so I think that the lesson that was learned Friday night was, I don't even know if we'll know how much those boys learned from that. And I think that Sean is especially building young men, and that is what is important to him. And I gave him a high five at church Sunday. And then the Fruitland Peninsula Historical Society, they're going to, they came to really, they have so much historical artifacts. And Shereen Nelson, her mother, wrote in the Crescent City Courier-Journal for so long, and she saved so much. Shereen has semi-trailer loads of stuff that she has to go through. So this is going to be so helpful, and they have a grand plan to eventually, after they get all of the stuff catalogued and archived, then to maybe eventually, one day, open a museum in Crescent City. And I think that's just a really great goal, and it's wonderful that people are that concerned about history of Crescent City and the surrounding areas in South Putnam. And I, too, want to congratulate the seniors, and I'm looking forward to the graduations. I'm so happy they're on time, and it does, you know, it's going to be great to be in person and be there on time when it was scheduled. And with that, I will go to Mr. Taylor, our board attorney.
No reports today.
Lex, can I, I wanted to add one thing to what Holly said and Sandy and Bud. You know, we're not just the school board with the city of Palatka. We're the school board with the city of Palatka and Crescent City, Melrose, Johnson, Samatia, East Palatka, every municipality, every community. We know the impact, and we know every inch of this place from Melrose to Clifton Road and the whole nine yards. So it's, you know, we just, we don't just cherry pick who we want to help. It's try to make it the best for every child involved, right down to the virtual school. I looked at that when Renee and, oh. Yes, we're up here a while ago, and all I can think of is, you know, these kids, they may have to have a job. They may have a child. You know, we have opportunities. We try to be all things to all people, and it's hard to do, but I tell you, our people are doing a good job trying to help everybody. So thank you for meeting every need that you can. That's wonderful. So I'll go on to Rick.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, thank you. And before I say a few comments, I want to recognize Rhonda Parrish in the back. Putting Rhonda on the spot. Rhonda, stand up and be recognized if you would. That's what you get for hanging around. Thank you, Rhonda. Rhonda's head of leadership development with NEFAC, and she works really hard keeping track of all the superintendents on the board and helping to train us. And Rhonda actually comes from Gilchrist County, and I know a few people over there myself, but she's come from Gilchrist County, and she's serving the NEFAC district, and they are a valuable partner for us. And Rhonda works real close with Sarah Jean McDaniel, our leadership development director. So Rhonda, thanks for being here. We appreciate all you do, okay? Also, and I appreciate Ashley for, you know, presenting the product of Putnam and also our athletes today, but I'm trying to get Ashley out there in as many speaking engagements as possible. I actually had her on the radio this morning, had her doing a little talk at one of our local civic clubs, and she's speaking next week at the civics club. Not that I'm trying to give Ashley something to do, but she is actually out there trying to message what we're doing in this district. That's her main task. And she's using a lot of resources, and you'll hear a lot more as we get into the strategic plan. But we're looking at doing some rebranding and really just changing the whole approach to our messaging. So if you have some groups around the community that you feel that would like to hear more about what we're doing as far as our revitalization plan and strategic plan and anything, Ashley's the one to do it. And she's doing a great job. She looks better and sounds better than me, so I'd rather put her out there and let her do all the talking. So thank you, Ashley. Our next board meeting on the fifteenth, just a reminder, we have a workshop. we have a workshop at two o'clock on the fifteenth, and that will be, Mr. Hinky will provide the information for you to vote on regarding our strategic plan. So, that's going to be an extremely important meeting, and then it will be on the consent agenda at that, at that particular board meeting. Right after that, the week later, our entire administrative staff here at the district is going to have a retreat, and we're going to actually go off away from this building, and we're going to do nothing but focus on that strategic plan and develop an action plan for the, this coming year, on how we can implement the strategic plan. And that's something we'll do on an annual basis, is develop these, these action plans, if you will. Again, there are some long-range goals involved, but, you know, every year, we really need to be specific and develop some things that we want to accomplish for the year. We'll be meeting with the principals later and going over that, but this is a real important plan for moving our district forward. And I appreciate all the people who have participated in the planning part of this, and especially all of you. I mean, this is really, this is your plan, and this will be what we will do from now until two thousand twenty-six. So, that's going to be an important meeting on the fifteenth. By the way, just a little public service announcement. On June the fifth, so Saturday, this coming Saturday, we're actually going to be providing vaccine, vaccine shots at all three high schools, and it'll be drive-through service. So, again, we're trying to make it available to our community as much as we can, and we've advertised that on our website and Facebook page, I believe.
What's the age, Superintendent?
Twelve and above, I believe. Right.
And I believe it's the Pfizer.
It is the Pfizer.
Pfizer, okay.
And they will schedule a follow-up. We'll give that information out soon.
Good.
But it's for anybody, not school-related?
No, it can be anyone phoned up.
Okay.
Do they need any, any documentation, anything at all?
I don't think any more than what, obviously, if they're underage, if they're below, under eighteen, they need parent signature, guardian's signature.
Sure.
So, that'll happen there. So, there may be more information at the Department of Health website, and then that flyer that we sent out, it's also, should be on the front page of the district news on our website. And I'm pretty sure it just said that if they are between like twelve and seventeen, they would need parent consent.
There is a number there. They can call the Health Department for additional information. Thank you, Ashley.
We're only providing the space. The Health Department has really taken this initiative on themselves to try to ensure that we are meeting that population of students.
And by the way, we did send out communication to our students, our parents, and all of our staff, that we were going to maintain our protocols through the end of the school year, and then after that, masks or face, facial coverings will be voluntary in all of our schools. And then, I hope to sit up here with Bud next, in our next board meeting, if that's okay with you, Bud.
I guess Kennedy's watching, but she texts. No documents needed.
Okay.
Okay, good, good. Thank you, Thomas. Let me, last thing I want to say is our Memorial Day parade yesterday, it was really good to be out in a parade. I don't think we've been in a parade since like Christmas of two thousand nineteen, and it was just great to see the community come together. Shout out to Mark Modle back here, being part of the Boy Scouts, and saw him walking with the group of Boy Scouts, so thank you, Mark. And our QI Roberts Band actually marched in the parade, did an outstanding job. And we also had a lot of the girls who were part of the Queen Candidates at the fair, they were there as well. And if I miss any students, I apologize. I just want to point out, a lot of students in our school district were involved in that parade. So, and again, you mentioned the ceremony down at the riverfront was very touching. So, you know, just want to say, it's great to be in person and see community events again, so.
RTC was there, too?
RTC, thank you very much. And if anybody, did I miss anybody that you know of, any of you at the parade, any of our student groups? Thank you, Mark. That's all. I have my end of here.
Okay, anyone have anything further? This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.